Welcome. This is Olentangie School Board's regular meeting. Tonight is June 9th. We are coming to you virtually. And Mrs. Hatfield, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Present.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Mrs. Feasel?
Here.
And Dr. Wise?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I now, I will take a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
A second, please?
Second, since Dr. Wise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into the Board's President, the President's report. I like to say I'll be brief. I might not be tonight. But I wanted to cover some various topics. First, I'd like to thank Jackie Merkel and Heather Cole for hosting our five town hall meetings around equity and inclusion. I was able to attend three. I think Mrs. Feasel and Dr. Wise were, you were four, Julie, Lakeisha, you were, how many?
Um, all but one.
Okay, four. And I was very pleased. I thought it was a very open and safe platform for our community members, students, former students, staff and teachers to share their experiences, and thoughts and ideas, and to work towards a culture of diverse and inclusive excellence. So, thank you to those that participated. And Dr. Merkel will be sharing an update on them later this evening. So I would also now like to take a moment to go over the role of the Board of Education and what us members do. I think it's an important time for it to reflect that. The Board does not preside over daily operations. We set policy in which operations follow. We are not involved in the procurement of services and materials, but rather approving those expenditures. We do not handle cases of discipline. We only, only if the policies were followed when addressing. So I like to think of us as an oversight committee. We oversee two employees, the Treasurer and the Superintendent. We do not have offices anywhere in the district, and we are all employed outside of the district. So this is more or less a volunteer position, and our duties are performed on our own personal time. We do get paid $125 a meeting, and I made, I pulled out my W2 yesterday. I made $2,750 in 2019. So what we do is we review documents for our board meetings. We attend award ceremonies, sporting events, pep rallies, open houses. We all sit on various committees. We attend graduations, et cetera. We do the, all of that on our own time, unpaid. This year is my fourth year serving as President or Vice President, and both roles require agenda planning meetings the week prior to a board meeting. So instead of 20 to 24 meetings a year, the President and Vice President will, will attend 40 to 48. So I won't even touch on the additional obligations that the President has. That is why we rotate through the position, because it has additional responsibilities. So I'm not sharing this to complain. I knew what I was signing up for. And serving my community and having a role in the education of our youth is truly an honor. We, as Board members, take great pride in Olentangie Schools, and serving is our personal contribution to the community and a decision that none of us took lightly when deciding to run for office. That being said, please note that we are parents with families. Our availability is restricted by our employment. Mrs. Feasel is, she's a little bit of a unique situation, because she is a communication director professionally. So her position allows her constant access to activity at the State House, the ability to attend meetings and press conferences that touch on education funding and current legislation. And so we are very fortunate that her professional and volunteer roles overlap. And this year, our district has faced multiple monumental issues, all of which deserve immense time and attention. So I would like to compliment the community for their patience as the district addresses the plan for returning to school. I know we need answers, and the unknown is the toughest to navigate, and speaking as a control freak, I am so far out of my happy place, there just aren't even words. I, I'm a planner. So what I can share is the day that we finish school in May is the, the day after that, we began planning for the next school year. And what started as a 28-page document has turned into, the last time I saw it, about a six-inch binder. We anxiously awaited guidance from our Governor. He provided very little. Mr. Rafe has been in constant communication with other superintendents as they collaborate, share their thoughts and concerns about how we actually tackle the 2020-21 school year. All plans and procedures consider student and safety first. And we have task teams for elementary, middle and high school collaborating in addressing the various, how we will learn in these various scenarios. So I would like to emphasize that we are not only responsible for 22,000 students, but also over 2,600 staff members. Students cannot be in school if they don't have healthy staff to clean, to transport, to feed and to educate. We have to have healthy staff to provide those services. So that brings me to my main point, and yeah, it took me a little bit to get here, but I don't think anybody needs reminding that our country is, is very divided. Myself and other Board members have received quite a few emails from parents sharing their thoughts on how we should return to school. And I have attempted to respond to these emails. I always encourage parents to utilize the survey that we sent out. It does do the best job capturing all of that information. None of us Board members are on planning teams. So providing us with that information isn't going straight to the source. Our administrators, if they're spending all their time answering emails, they're not working on the plan. We need all hands on deck for our plans in various scenarios. And I believe Mr. Rafe had mentioned to me that when we do release on the 13th our return to school plan, that there will be additional surveys for parents and community members and staff to participate in. Please use those. Because our community is full of intelligent citizens, and they live here for a high-quality education and community experience. So I say, why do we have to be divided? And who says someone's feelings are right and someone else's are wrong? Preaching tolerance means practicing tolerance, and as we move forward, families will make the best decisions for them. And we need to respect that decision. There's no clear path, and what is going to work best for one person is going to look different for another. So the only real guidance we have is to move forward in a manner that's best for our staff and our students' health and well-being. So let's be an example of unity, not division. Let's be one Olentangie. I'd like to thank Mr. Rafe, and a huge thank to his team for working tirelessly on how to educate our students during this pandemic. We acknowledge that we're in a reactive, and we prefer to be in a proactive, but to move forward, this is our path. So I would like to now open it up to Dr. Wise, because I would appreciate her perspective. She's not, she's a parent, she's an educator, and she's a healthcare professional. Dr. Wise?
Yes. So as a Board member, a parent, a nurse, an educator, my thoughts have centered around physical and mental health of my three children. I have three kids, or I have kids who have IEPs and 504s in place. I recognize the challenge of meeting IEP goals when you're not face-to-face in the classroom. I also consider our teachers and staff, my husband is a middle school teacher, and his safety is a, is a concern to me as well. I've read the guidance on reopening schools from the American Academy of Pediatrics, the National Education Association, and the CDC's consideration for K-12 schools, as well as following our county statistics. Using this knowledge has helped my family make a decision that we do want our children to return to school in a safe environment that has the proper protocols and procedures in place, not just for students, but for all teachers and staff. While this is my position, I totally respect the positions of our parents or teachers and staff that may differ from mine. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you for sharing. I appreciate that. Does anybody else have any comments that they would like to provide? I, I am a parent of a student on an IEP that will be attending the Career Center. So as I look forward, we've made a whole year of plans based on, you know, a program with a lab. So I am really hopeful that he will be able to move forward, or we'll have to do a lot of recalibrating.
The only thing I would, I would like to say is that we have over 22,000 students, so that means we have about 40,000 thoughts of how we should open up. And I would like to ask people to be respectful of everyone's thoughts that are out there, but know that our administration is going to do what is best. And it may not be best for one person, but it will be best for the entirety, entire district. So just please keep that in mind.
Agreed. Thank you. Okay. Well, I rambled on long enough. Mr. Rafe, your superintendent's report, please.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. For my superintendent report tonight, I'm going to focus on our, what will be called our One Olentangie Back Together 2020 Plan. And before anyone gets too excited, we're looking forward to releasing our intentions on Monday, July 13th, as previously communicated. So we're not given any details yet tonight. A great deal of work by many people has gone into developing a plan that meets our top priorities: facilitating maximum learning for every student, and ensuring the safety, health, and well-being of our students and staff. You know, I'd like to begin, though, this by thanking the many, many people involved in the development of our plan. First, to all of you, our Board of Education, for giving us, the leadership team, the trust and confidence to develop a plan that meets those two previously stated priorities. We are infinitely appreciative of the trust and confidence you've shown in us. Our Back to School Committee, chaired by Elaine Eddy, our President of the OTA, and Dr. Jack Fettie. This committee is comprised of teachers and members of our curriculum team, and they looked at all of the teaching and learning issues related to hybrid learning and full remote learning, and contributed to the plan in those areas, along with providing the valuable classroom teacher perspective with regards to returning to school. The committee has representation from all three levels, and six, there are six different subcommittees, three of which are dedicated to special education. So I'd also like to compliment our Curriculum Director, Mrs. Peggy McMurray, our Technology Director, Mr. Rob Sexton, and our Director of People's Services, Mr. Marty Argonbright, who have all been very involved in all aspects of the committee's work. Next, I want to thank the Operations Team: Jeff Gordon, Nancy Fries, Jennifer Eiseman, Joe Swazey, Cindy Mason, Jeremy Mitchell, John McDonald, who's President of the Custodians Association, and others have looked at more different types of PPE, cleaning and safety equipment than can be imagined, and how to operationalize all this in a school day. Lori Carter Evans and the Transportation Team, along with Mr. Kevin Vangeloff, the President of the Bus Drivers Association, examined every aspect of being able to safely transport our kids to school. And of course, trying to figure out how to feed all of our students has been a huge task, and Bethany Lanko and her team have risen to the challenge there. I want to thank everyone who completed a parent survey or who has participated in our thought exchanges. Parents, staff, students, all of your feedback was valuable as we worked to develop a plan with a lot of flexibility that again, meets the priorities of facilitating maximum learning for every student and ensuring the safety, health and well-being of our students and staff. And finally, I want to thank our District Leadership Team, which includes our Treasurer, Emily Hatfield, Mrs. Krista Davis, Mr. Todd Meyer, Mr. Randy Wright, and Dr. Jack Fettie, who provided outstanding leadership and steadfast resolve throughout this process. I just, I wish I had a calculation of the number of team meeting hours they spent to bring this all together. We've submitted our plan to the Delaware County General Health District for additional feedback, and we'll make modifications as necessary before Monday. It's our intention to share the plan on Monday morning with the staff and with the entire community Monday afternoon. I'll have a video message that accompany, to accompany the written communication that we send. What we share will be a very high level, followed by additional and more detailed communication during the remainder of the week. And as we all know, the devil is in the details. So we're going to develop a microsite that will contain all of the back-to-school resources. I do believe we've worked very hard to listen to our staff, to listen to our parents, and even our students through the survey results, and to plan to continue, and plan to continue to ask for feedback as we move forward. We will have an avenue for feedback through the microsite, and an ability for parents and staff to ask questions and to get answers quickly. So that's all I have related to the back-to-school plan at this time. You know, I know people are anxious. I just got this. Somebody just sent this to me, and I think it's just really pertinent. As leaders, for what school like, will look like in the near future, be patient with them. If school starts normally, people will be angry. If school starts with restrictions, people will be angry. If we wear masks, people will be angry. If we don't wear masks, people will be angry. If student athletics are canceled, people will be angry. If students or athletics are allowed to continue without spectators, people will be angry. If we have a staggered start time, continued social distancing, or a combination of both, people will be angry. We, you and I, are all in a lose-lose situation, and the choices we make over the next few weeks, weeks and months are uncharted territory. And I know we're all doing the best we can with the information being provided. So I still love the phrase "for all of us," patience and grace and empathy, and try to stay positive. Again, I want to thank, close by thanking everyone in the organization and in the community for all the work and support. And it's truly during these most difficult times that you, that you realize what a great team we have in Olentangie, and what a great community that we all live in. So with that, I will take any questions you have.
Mrs. Feasel has a question.
Oh goodness, here we go.
Mr. Rafe, at last, at our last meeting, you announced that 50% of the parents, 47% of the students, and 76% of the staff responded to the survey, but will any of the results be made public?
Yes, that will all be in, when we, it'll all be on the microsite as to how the decision-making and all that came about. Mrs. Davis, do you want to chime in on that?
Yes. Sorry, I was trying to raise my hand. We will be sharing-
She likes to raise her hand before I say something wrong, just so we're all clear.
I am, yes, we are, in the letter that will be going out on Monday, we will have a link to our district website, which will have a story on it, including all the survey results from parents, students and staff. So yes, that will be available beginning Monday.
Great. Feasel, any other questions?
Nope.
No? I just was going to ask, are you, how will people know the microsite address? And you said that there will be an email with a link, so you answered my question.
Yes, I just, Mindy, excuse me, I just wanted to also say we won't be sending that link out until Thursday, because we'll be finalizing that site. But we will have lots of communication next week after Monday as well.
Great. Good to know. Thank you.
Dustin, do I have any more slides?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I just want to also just touch on two action items. We are renewing our beverage supply service contract with Pepsi Cola Bottling for another five years. That, so all you Coke drinkers out there, sorry, but we're staying with Pepsi. We feel like we have a good arrangement with Pepsi, and they have been serving our district well, so we're happy to continue that with Pepsi. And then we have a purchase on here for educational furniture, just our normal classroom replacement furniture. Although, Mr. Gordon has been feverishly looking at all these different PPE and dividers and safety measures, and we may have some purchases coming through for some additional furniture in the future, so we can do lunch hopefully with more social distancing. Next slide. I think I'm done, Dustin.
Done.
That's it? All right. Any questions?
I don't have, I do have one comment, because we are getting, oh, I see Mr. O'Brien has one. We, we're getting a lot of emails on PPE equipment, like, I can't even imagine poor Mr. Gordon, how, how many he's getting. But go ahead, Mr. O'Brien.
You covered my comment, Mindy. I want to save some salespeople some time and stop emailing us about PPE.
Right. I, that was, I thought, I tried to cover that in my President's Report as well, like, that does not run through the Board, so. My condolences to Mr. Gordon on having, because if we're getting that many, I can only imagine, so. Anything else? Okay, well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hatfield, what do you have for us this evening with your Treasurer's Report?
Just a couple of key things to talk about this evening. We have closed fiscal year 2020, which just happened in the blink of an eye. And with that close, we are in good position with our financials. As you may or may not have known from a lot of the press conferences and information coming out from the Governor's Office, they did decide to try to return some of the state funding that was withheld from us. So we did receive an additional approximately $2 million. And then we are also under budget on our expenditures. So we will be, we have ended the fiscal year at approximately $3 million positive. We'll go through more details on that and talk more about savings in our expenditures, you know, not just due to closing, but also due to billing lag, and take a look at our encumbrances that we're carrying forward, because those are a little bit higher than we had anticipated in the five-year forecast. So we'll go through all those numbers and those specific information on the 28th, when we have our Board financials presented for your approval. We are continuing to work on the update to the liability section of the E-Finance Plus contract or agreement with Meta Solutions for our new fiscal software. I hope to have more information for you within the next week or so as we go through that with our council, to look at all the details and make sure that it meets our expectations. And then moving forward, we are getting ready to gear up for audit season. As you may or may not remember, we did a RFP to go out to bid for, to have a CPA firm versus the Auditor of State perform that audit for us. So Plattenburg and Associates will be in contact with us within the next month, and we'll start that season and get that going within our department and across our food service staff. And they also do an IT audit as well to make sure that our firewalls and all of our security metrics are in place as well. So that will be happening in the coming months as we work through what we're doing and how we're bringing back our students this fall. One of the things that I wanted to mention, Mr. Rafe, I'm sorry, I'm going to steal a little bit of your thunder, but I noticed when, as we're talking about the microsite, it brought to my attention that we do have the new website up. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at it, but it's really nice and how there are representations of our buildings. It is a live site, so that there's, you know, motion and action, and better organization for the community as they try to look for information from the district. So I look forward to that moving forward in the coming year and being able to work with microsites and things that are embedded in it. It will, should work a lot better than our previous site. So thank you, Mrs. Davis, for working on that amidst all of the change and communications you've had to do with going back to school and other topics that are happening as of late. With that, I will take any questions you might have for me.
Okay, so Mr. O'Brien's hand is still up, but that's from the last question, right?
That's an old, I'll take it down, sorry.
Now, okay, I don't, I don't see any questions, so thank you very much for your report.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. Do we have any public participation?
No, we do not.
Okay. Okay, well, then we are going to move on to our discussion items. Let me get on to the slide. I'm looking at the wrong thing. Mr. Rafe, are you taking the first discussion item about our rehire-retire? Am I on mute? Wait.
I was on mute. I'm sorry. I was, I was, I need to find my notes. Mr. Meyer has, he's probably, he's on vacation, but he's probably watching, and he told me, he did send me notes about this one. So as, as part of the process, there is a timeline for the retire-rehire of any teacher. In this case, it's Roland Demato, math teacher at OHS. So we accepted Mr. Demato's resignation on May 14th, in fact, of June 1st. We sent a media notice, the media notice of a public meeting notices a newspaper of general circulation in the district must run at least 60 days prior to the Board action, which would be then August 13th to discuss a possible rehire of a teacher, in this case Roland Demato, at the July 9th Board meeting. So at this Board meeting, there's discussion item 15 to 30 days prior to the Board action, listed on the Board agenda regarding the retire-rehire of a teacher. And so on August 13th, Mr. Demato will be recommended for rehire. He's a math teacher at OHS from, for the 2021 school year at Column 7, Step 5, which is $67,735. His original placement on the Certified Scholarship Schedule for 2021 would be Column 7, Step 33, which is $110,881. So the savings for the district is $43,146, which, Mrs. Feasel, had I not said all that, would have asked, definitely asked that question.
She would have.
So that is my report on the intent to rehire math teacher Roland B. Demato. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
Roughly, how many retire-rehires do we have? I mean, it's a fairly small segment of the population.
It's a great question that-
It seems like two every couple of years. It's not a lot.
Yeah, it is, and you know, they, they come in, honestly, you know, they're hired for one-year contracts. They're, they're non, you know, automatically non-renewed. I think currently, we're at six across the entire district.
Wow.
I would agree with that, Mr. Rafe, we're at five or six.
I just, I, I thought, there was a time it was as high as eight. I know there was a time there was low as, as, as three. I just- I just, I will have to, um, I'll chastise Mr. Meyer for not anticipating that question, because that was a great logical question, and I should have had that information. We're going to one day of vacation.
So, on less than 10.
Yes, definitely, it is definitely less than 10. And they are all very significant savings for the district, there's just, I mean, we get a great, oh, Mr. Meyer says six or seven, he's texting Krista Davis. I knew he'd be watching.
Uh, Mrs. Beazel has a question.
Yeah, I just wanna point out that, um, you know, it used to be that, um, it's, it used to be more beneficial, I guess, for people to do this. It's not as beneficial as it used to be to the person, like, um, they now, they now have to participate in paying for their health insurance, just like they would for a normal teacher. So, we used to get a lot of flack about this from previous school board members, but it's a cost savings to the school district. You know, they could continue working at the level that they're working at.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're really, I mean, and Mr. Demato's an excellent math teacher, we, you know, he's been, he's actually been here in the district for 33 years, he was part of the group of teachers that came over from when the high school opened in 1991, and, you know, he's, he does a great job. And the reality is, is that when people ask for this, if, if we're not, we don't, we don't have to say yes to it, and we say yes to the ones we want to say yes to, but if we say no to it, the reality is, is they can keep working, and, um, then, uh, we keep paying them that top dollar. So, this way, they go on a one-year contract, and we decide if they're gonna continue. And the reality is, is people like Mr. Demato, that are excellent teachers, that have dedicated a lot, you know, their entire lives to this, they're, they don't, they don't shut it down, they just continue being great teachers, so. I'm not sure if he was ahead of Ms. Eddie on the, on the seniority list or not, but she's always happy when somebody who's got more seniority falls off ahead of her, because she's trying to be up to number one eventually. I know she's listening.
Mrs. Beazel's hand is still up, but I think she's, she does not have any more questions.
She's a really strong arm.
I know, she does. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Rafe, and let's welcome Dr. Merkel, our supervisor of equity and inclusion, she's going to share some updates with us. Dr. Merkel.
Thank you so much for having me. Heather, Shannon, and I are proud to have led the five town halls for the district, and we truly appreciate that so many board members and district leadership team members were there with us to hear the community, share their ideas for moving forward. Dustin, I'm gonna ask if you can help me by advancing my slides tonight, thank you so much. So just general information about the town halls, we held five of them, the first one started on June 24th, and the last one wrapped up last night. Had approximately 500 attendees over the course of those five nights, and we had 38 different public participants, um, that range from students, alumni, parents, and teachers. Next slide, please. How I decided to organize the presentation tonight is around what the Equity and Inclusion Team calls our five drivers of change. So a little background on this, when the diversity committee started in 2010, we adopted these five drivers of change that have kind of helped to guide all of the work that we have done, um, over the last 10 years. So I organized the feedback from the town hall to align with each of these drivers and, and kind of share that curated information with you. Uh, next slide, please. So, the first, um, the first driver is measurement and accountability. So we heard a lot of feedback around this particular driver. The first was looking at a suggestion, multiple suggestions were made to conduct an external audit, to bring someone in, an outside contractor, to really determine the effectiveness of our diversity and inclusion efforts, our policies, and our hiring practices, to see, from an outside perspective, how effective those have been. The second is looking at how we can better collect and analyze data that can show us gaps, areas for improvement, and how our efforts are making progress towards our delineated goals. So with that, you know, looking at setting specific, very specific goals and metrics with timelines for completion, recognizing that some work is more immediate, while other action items might take longer to implement. And so, once those goals and timelines are completed, then, working to ensure that we are communicating those, our goals and our efforts, with stakeholders openly and proactively, so transparency. Community members have asked that, you know, we detail for them, what have been our successes, what have been our failures, what have we tried that has worked, and what hasn't been as effective, and why. Then, we had some comments around, you know, the accountability piece. And so, quite a few community members, stakeholders, offered us to consider revisiting our reporting system, processes, and practices, to ensure they're effective and consistently implemented across the district. Also, ensuring that they delineate mechanisms for following up with, who have been harmed by bullying, harassment, and discrimination, so how are we following up with that? Two specific ideas that came up as a part of this regarding a reporting system, the first was looking at an anonymous hotline system, and that came up many times. And while we do have the Stay Safe Speak Up Helpline, it became evident to us that many community members and students are still unaware of its existence. So I think additional communication around that tool and resource that we have. Secondly, um, it was asked of us to consider adopting an honorary board position to oversee our reporting and investigation process around race. Next slide, please. So, the second driver that we have is looking at policy, and also, I've lumped a handbook in this as well. So specifically, uh, we had a lot of different ideas that fell into this idea of discipline around racial discrimination. So, one of the ones that was brought up was around developing a tiered system, so specifically outlining discipline and education measures that are tied with a specific tier of the discipline process. So in essence, a student does this action, the first time, they receive this consequence. They do that action again, the second time, they receive a higher consequence. So, creating a tiered structure and system that is enforced consistently across the buildings, and that there's not room for ambiguity or subjectivity. The second, uh, the second idea was around zero tolerance. So, the current handbook language that we have is that, you know, during acts of racial discrimination, that suspension will result and expulsion may result. So, forcing that zero tolerance across all buildings for racial discrimination and harassment, and again, like, removing any subjectivity that can come along with that. So then, there is also asked for increased transparency, which goes back to the first driver as well, around accountability. So how are we increasing transparency around what's happening when incidents occur, while still staying within what FERC will allow us to do? But ensuring that the reporting parties are aware that action is being taken, and that we are circling back with those consistently who have made reports. It was then asked of us to make sure that we are consistently looking at data, to see if there is a disparate impact around discipline for certain racial groups, based on our policies and how they are applied. And if so, if we discover that that is the case, then rising those policies and practices to ensure equity. Lastly, you'll see here a couple of times throughout the slides, that while these town halls were initially dedicated specifically for racial justice, ideas that deviated from race were brought up many times, and one of those was around LGBTQ students. So it was asked of us to ensure that our policies include protections for LGBTQ students around bullying and harassment. Next slide, please. So our third driver of change is recruitment and retention. So, there were many, many comments that were brought to the fore, and ideas around increasing our diverse teaching and administrative staff. You know, there were discussions around looking at our culture, to ensure that, you know, the culture that we have here is inclusive and anti-racist, so that teachers and administrators of color feel comfortable teaching and leading in our community. There are also ideas around prioritizing relationship building with HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities, as well as local universities, that if we start those relationships now, and we're consistent with interacting with students, that we might be able to see more success in our recruiting efforts. Then, we, there were quite a few comments around interviews. So, how are we reviewing our interview process to ensure that our questions screen for diversity awareness, and to make sure that the values and beliefs of our future candidates align with our missions and values? One specific participant asked us to consider implementing a Rooney Rule, or a revised Rooney Rule, which in essence would mean that for any position that is being hired for in the district, that would require that a racially diverse candidate, at least one, is a part of every single interview process. Then we were asked to consider working to ensure that all of our hiring panels incorporate diverse members, and consider having candidates meet with the supervisor of equity and inclusion, or the equity and inclusion team, before making a final determination around hiring. Then, there was a thread around the retention piece. So how are we supporting black, indigenous, people of color that are staff members in our district? And they really kind of centered around two ideas. One was around implementing a mentorship program for our staff of color, to ensure that they had members of our staff that are currently here, that can support them, and that they, you know, if they have any needs, that they can go to that person. This is something that we had going for a brief bit before my time in the district, and something that I think we could definitely look at getting started again. And then, also affinity groups. So, a lot of corporations, a lot of nonprofits do this, they're called different things, affinity groups, employee resource groups, but they're around like specific identity markers, so that staff members can kind of come together in a social way, in a professional way, to just build kind of a community together, to talk about different issues that come up and build that support system. Next slide, please. So the fourth driver is training and education, and this is broken up over two slides, because this was very heavily discussed at the town hall in two different areas, professional development and curriculum. So with professional development, it was asked of us to ensure that all staff members, classified, certified, and administrative, including the district leadership team and board leadership, receive professional development on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that this is ongoing. Additionally, there was a lot of conversation around integrating diversity and equity training or support, learning for our students. Specifically, diversity liaisons were named, as people that our community feels should receive additional training beyond the four quarterly trainings that they currently receive, and additional support, to ensure that they can really be go-to resources in the building for diversity and inclusion, um, issues that may arise, ideas, questions. And then I've kind of detailed here, the most, the common topics that were brought up throughout the town halls, that people felt we really need professional development around. So, implicit bias, bullying, harassment, cultural sensitivity, home uninformed care, anti-racism, and LGBTQ, such as appropriately using pronouns. Next slide, please. So, moving beyond professional development, then we get into that second aspect of training and education, which is really curriculum. And so, these were some of the goals that our community members and stakeholders had around curriculum. Integrating the history of black, indigenous, people of color communities into our existing courses, ensuring that the content is not only created, but it's created by or with the support from communities of color, and then it's evidence-based. Teaching a more diverse curriculum, K through 12, so not just doing this in high school, but really, you know, taking the effort to do this all the way from elementary throughout. Revealing our resources that are used to teach about diverse experiences, and ensure that they are quality, that they are, again, written by BIPOC authors. Looking at the creation of new courses, so a couple of those were specifically named that could be added on as additions, either as required additional courses, or optional additional courses for students. There was an idea brought up about establishing a visiting educator program, to bring in professors from different universities that are themselves diverse, and that, you know, specialize in these areas, to do lectures for students in the community. Many of the town halls featured conversation around Pioneer Day, and reworking that day to be more inclusive, and removing the outfits and the dress-up portion of the event. Incorporating LGBTQ experience and history in the curriculum, and then ensuring that Black History Month is expansive, so taught consistently throughout the month of February, as well as beyond, and also expansive beyond just Martin Luther King and Rosa Parks, but, you know, many of the different politicians, scientists, inventors, et cetera, that, you know, have contributed to the foundation and contemporary United States. Next slide, please. So the last pillar is stakeholder engagement, and this one is also broken up into two, because there were a lot of ideas here, and I've broken it up into two categories, how we can engage community and parents, and then the next slide is around how we can engage students and staff. So for community and parents, one of the ideas that came up multiple times was establishing a parent-led diversity committees that are specific to each building, and I believe that there are parents, Ashley and Salon Wise, that are already heading up that charge, and have been leading the building diversity committee at Johnny Cake for the past year and a half. It was also asked that our diversity, uh, district-level diversity committee goes back to its original structure of having subcommittees that are focused on some of these targeted action items, and that community members can be a part of those committees to help us, you know, make progress towards these initiatives. Then there was an idea brought up about the PTO, and working with, um, the PTO chairs to see if we could establish a diversity PTO position, that would kind of be a link to the community, work with the diversity liaison, and help to support these initiatives with the parents and in the community. And looking at developing partnerships with local businesses and stakeholders to serve as mentors for students. There was, um, creating a mentorship day on campus, where we could really bring a lot of representation from alumni, from the community, from businesses. And then, lastly, there's quite some conversation around doing some different coffee chats, or using some of the existing channels that we already have in place, like, for example, Donuts with Dads was brought up, to use that as an opportunity to have monthly topical conversations between parents, to, you know, have these questions, and allow them to talk with each other and with their students, develop these relationships, and engage with these ideas. Next slide, please. So, uh, the last pillar is still stakeholder engagement, and this focuses specifically on students and staff. There was some conversation around one community, and how people really found, find the conference beneficial, but that they would like to see a lot more opportunities for engagement beyond that conference. So ideas for how to take the events or the speakers from that conference, and instead, weave it throughout the school year in the buildings for parents, staff, and students to attend. The recognition of Heritage Months in the building, and also Black History Month was mentioned, and including assemblies for Black History Month in the building. Thinking about establishing some cultural exchanges with sister schools, whether they're in different districts, whether they're in different states or different countries. There's PENPAL programs, there's a lot of opportunities to think about establishing those. Using our kind of homeroom opportunities that we have for students as an ability to discuss diversity with teachers and students, so that could be an existing mechanism. Also, considering additional cultural field trips, community service opportunities, and ensuring that the cultural events that we do have, that they continue to remain present, but also that they go beyond just food and dress. I think some people felt like it was becoming kind of a superficial celebration, and that they would like to see additional opportunities to kind of dialogue about the different cultures, and really to have it as a learning opportunity. So my final slide tonight is just some of the additional recommendations that I kind of had a hard time fitting in those five drivers, so I'd like to share those with you. The first is that there was a request that our board and DLT really acknowledge the impact of racism on our students, and do so publicly. Also, developing a cultural competency requirement that could be a part of the National Honor Society, honor diplomas. Society, honor diplomas, or even that varsity athletes would need to take. So, you know, that's something that we could develop that would be a part of, being a part of those other activities. Starting a truth and reconciliation council for our community. This was brought up by a community member who is South African, and this, this idea is born out of South Africa, where it's really a place to talk about wrongdoing, hear experiences with the hopes of resolving that conflict that's left over from the past. So this was actually implemented after apartheid in South Africa, so doing something kind of similar. Hosting a Walk in Our Shoes initiative to continue to build empathy and understanding for different cultures. Thinking about inclusive bathrooms and locker rooms for LGBTQ students. And then there was some conversation around SROs and police officers. One was limiting the role and the presence of SROs in the building to divert funds towards mental health and guidance counselors. And the second was looking at bringing Black and white law enforcement officers to the district to hear concerns specifically from students and staff of color and also students with disabilities to just have some productive dialogue about, you know, law enforcement and their expenses. So that's all I have.
Well, that was, that was quite encompassing. Thank you. I, I know you must have really been hustling to get all of that compiled since your last, your last town hall was last night, so thank you for doing that. I see Mr. O'Brien has his hand up.
Sorry, how's it view? Actually, I don't really have a question, more of a comment. I know, I saw the reference to the Rooney Rule of the NFL. And I guess, I would hope, I should not hope, I'm confident that Mr. Meyer and our HR staff will do better than the Rooney Rule, because I don't believe the Rooney, Rooney Rule has been successful and has actually led to any meaningful change in the NFL. So to put that out there, I just had a reaction to it that, you know, we could do better than the Rooney Rule.
Thank you. Mr. Rafe has his hand up.
Thank you. I, I just want to thank Jackie and Heather and Shannon. Jackie is, of course, an administrator, so we really don't care about her time and all the work she put in this summer. But Heather and Shannon are teachers, and again, for people who think teachers don't work in the summer, they, Heather is a halftime teacher, and she put in about three weeks' worth of work the last two weeks during, doing, hosting the town halls and really being the frontline face. She was the moderator and, and just did a fabulous, fabulous job. And Shannon ran the chat. Jackie did a great job with the intros and organizing it all and, you know. And it, it was, it was really hard to, to sit there and, you know, and listen to the stories and hear. And, and, you know, for the people, somebody calling for a public apology, you know, we've sent out messages, we talked about this at our last board meeting. I, I am, I'm truly sorry that these experience, that these people, anybody in our district who's having this type of experience, especially with regards to racism, we, I know, I know you feel the same way. We, we talked about this, you know, two years ago, when some of the same stories got retold at one of the town halls that were told at a board meeting two years ago. Things, things that have been brought to our attention have been addressed and, and change has happened. Mr. Wright is currently compiling some data about the impact of us changing our handbook rule about mandatory suspension with regards to racist comments. And I think, I know we've seen a decrease. He's going to present that here coming up in the future. We're going to keep this as an important, a discussion topic for every, for, for board meetings going forward, not forever, but for at least the current, so we can address these issues. So I don't know how many more ways we can apologize, but, you know, I know none of us want anybody, whether it's with regards to ableism, or sexism, or racism, or, you know, whatever it might be. We don't want anybody having a bad experience in our, in our school district. We understand the importance of the culture of our district and the impact that the culture of the district has on the ability for us to facilitate maximum learning for every student. So all I can say again is we, we, we are sorry that these things have happened, and we're going to continue to try to address them and get better at everything we do each and every day. You know, as Mrs. Davis has said in many of the messages, when we know better, we can do better. So we're going to continue down that path. But again, Jackie, Heather, Shannon, the Equity and Inclusion Team, you guys are rock stars. Thank you.
Thank you.
They did a great job with that, and I do think it is cathartic to be able to, to have the conversation in a safe space. I mean, that's, that's part of the process, right? You, you have to be able to talk about it. So I'm, I'm glad that that was available to our community. So thank you very much for doing that. And I know that that, that's just the tip of the iceberg. Now you have a lot of things to take back and take with you. I, I did have one area that I, you know, I, I love the One Community Conference. I look forward to it every year, and I remember when we used to host events throughout the year. I, I remember going to Olentangie High School and seeing, they had several different things going on. I remember being at Liberty High School, like, in the evenings. And I, it, it seems, and Jackie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we have much more participation when we have this event and, and, and a much larger amount of hosts or, I don't know, breakout sessions. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, so that was one of the things that actually led us to move it to a Saturday is we felt very limited by the, you know, two hours in the evening, and there's a lot of commitments with sports and other things in the evening. And, you know, we've seen our attendance double, triple by being able to offer it on a Saturday, and also the number of workshops are being able to be greatly expanded by doing that as well.
That was, that was my observation too, so thank you for sharing that. Dr. Wise has her hand up.
I do, and I'm just kind of, kind of piggyback on the one, the one conference, One Community Conference, and I'm hoping with, you know, with all that has taken place, that's planning for the next one, for those that were participating in the town halls would be speakers, you know, or, you know, during the workshop. So I'm hoping that we'll see more community involvement in One Community. And I, I'm just, I mean, the, the town halls were hard, hard here, but I'm definitely glad that, you know, the, the community was able to speak, and I know that we're moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands up. Any, any other comments before we move on? Okay, well, thank you, and keep us updated, and we, we look forward to hearing what's around the corner.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay. Well, I think that brings us to our superintendent action items. Mr. Rafe, would you please present your action items? Mr. Rafe, are you muted? I, I'm looking at the first one.
Yes, I know, I did, I was sorry, I did it twice. I would like to present superintendent action items A through E for approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Feasel, a second, please.
Second, O'Brien.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there any discussion? I do want to make a comment that my pupil service representative, Elise Ross, I noticed is on here, and that makes me very sad. So I wish her the best, and I will, I will very much miss her.
Thank you for saying that.
Yeah. Okay, Mrs. Hatfield, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Minister O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Mr. King, come off mute.
Raise your hand for yes.
Yeah, that will, there you go.
Yes, I vote yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Dr. Wise?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, then I will now entertain a motion to adjourn this evening. You guys want to stay, really? I can't get a motion first?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Wise. Please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes. And before we formally adjourn, Mrs. Feasel has her hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted you to remind people about, we added a meeting.
Oh, yes, we did, and we will be meeting again on July 28th. So I, I don't know that we have, Mr. Rafe, or is that an in-person meeting?
That's the plan right now, that is the plan, in-person.
Well, it'll be nice to see everybody again.
Yes, it will.
Okay, well, everybody have a good evening and thank you for joining us.
You too.
Bye.